We can, we can move those chairs, you can move up.
No.
I'm fine.
Yes, I'm fine.
You're okay there?
Yes.
Home spot.
This is my island.
Oh.
Love it here.
I don't think there's no way to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, everyone. I call to order the June 12th, 2025 Hot Springs Planning Commission meeting. So, we will start the meeting with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. So, if you don't mind, please rise. First, we'll have the invocation delivered by Commissioner Scott.
Eternal God, we thank you this evening for allowing us to be here as citizens of this wonderful community. We pray that you will preside over this meeting, that we might have great dialogue and come to great conclusions that not only glorify you, but that benefit everyone that's here. Thank you so much. It's in your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, Mr. Stoudt, could you please call roll? Raimick?
Here.
Gerke?
Present.
Scott?
Present.
Walker?
Here.
Val?
Lamond?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Campbell?
Stone?
And Stafford?
Here.
Okay, so, this meeting is a little bit interesting. Our agenda is going to be slightly changed. We will be moving item number one into the new business, into the new business section of the agenda. And so, having done that, then we can ask for approval of the minute. Did I get that right? Or do you want to get the other?
You know what? Let's just go for it.
Okay. So, I need...
Approved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, now, I'd like to make a motion and get a second to withdraw the recommendation for item RZ-25-047 from the May 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. So, can I get a motion and a second to withdraw that recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have a modified agenda. And since we have moved old business into new business, let's just start there.
Would you like a motion and a vote to approve the amended agenda?
Okay. Let's have a motion and a second and a vote to approve the amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. Next matter is new business. So, Director Selman, could you please...
The minutes. I don't know that we did the minutes, Kathy.
I think we did the minutes.
Did we?
Well, let's do them again.
Let's do them again.
Move approval of the agenda, I mean, move approval of the minutes to the prior meeting of May 8th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. Thanks for catching that. So, now, Director Selman, could you please introduce the now first item on new business?
Yes, thank you. This rezon application was submitted on April 4th, 2025. It was heard at the Thursday, May 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. However, this application is being heard de novo due to an imperfection of notification. And as such, complete and proper notification was mailed by Certified List on May 22nd, 2025, in order to meet the requirements for zoning map amendment request. The applicant is Ms. Lindsay Landrum, representing property owner Gardner Methodist Church. She's seeking CG, General Commercial District zoning, for approximately .82 acres of land located at 413 Hammond Drive. It's currently zoned RN5, Residential Neighborhood 5, and has future land use classification of medium, residential medium high, and it's in Board of Directors, District Number 3. Land is unplatted, but developed with a church building. It's located north of Airport Road, across from an undeveloped parcel and Hammond Drive. This property has approximately 130 feet of street frontage on Hammond Drive. Surrounding property zoning to the west is RN5, to the south CG, to the north RN5, and to the east RN5. Adjacent and nearby land uses include, but are not limited, two condominiums, retail center, adult and alternative learning campus, office buildings, undeveloped land, and the airport. This application is requesting a change from RN5 to CG. It is adjacent to other CG, General Commercial District zone properties to the south, southwest, and southeast. There is a church building constructed approximately in 1960, and it is about 4,200 square feet, and most recently was used as Gardner Methodist Church. Hot Springs Code describes the CG, General Commercial District as follows. The district is intended to accommodate areas of commercial development predominantly located along corridors and at key nodes that serve residents, the community at large, and visitors to the city. The application project name is Wedding Chapel, and the proposed use is a wedding chapel and venue. The approval standards for zone change request, Planning Commission recommendation, and the Board of Directors' decision on any zoning text or map amendment is a matter of legislative discretion that is not controlled by any particular standard. However, in making the recommendation and decision, Planning Commission and the Board of Directors will consider the following standards. Approval of amendments is based on a balancing of these standards, and they are compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformities, response to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions, implements an approved city plan, including the comprehensive plan, consistency of the proposed amendment with the objectives of the code, that it fulfills a demonstrated public need, or that it corrects an error in previous map amendment action. Excuse me. The proposed rezoning request responds to these finding requirements in the following way. Compatibility with surrounding properties. The proposed, and this is from the application narrative, the proposed Wedding Chapel will be compatible with surrounding properties, which include a mix of commercial uses and an adjacent school. The surrounding area has evolved to accommodate various business operations and community services. And the application continues, a current but not exhaustive list of neighboring businesses include National Park Adult Education Center, Gardner ABC Pre-K, the AARP Foundation Resort Cable, Total Foot Care, and HARP Security. The chapel will complement this dynamic, offering a venue for local events, being consistent with the character and function of neighboring commercial properties. The application goes on to note that residential zoning is no longer suitable for the property. The scale, parking requirements, and overall design of the building are not consistent with residential use, and would require significant modifications to be adapted to residential use. Furthermore, maintaining the property as residential is unlikely to be viable due to the unique nature of the building and its location within an area that has largely shifted toward commercial development. The Wedding Chapel is described as operating as an event venue for weddings and elopements. The use of the space will be carefully planned to ensure minimal disruption to the neighborhood. Parking is provided on site, and the applicants would work closely with local authorities to ensure compliance with all necessary zoning, parking, and safety requirements. The application continues that by investing in the adaptive reuse of the church, we are not only preserving a valuable community asset, but also ensuring that the property remains an enduring and environmentally responsible part of the community. In summary, the application says, the rezon of this property from residential to commercial is a logical and necessary step. The proposed Wedding Chapel will complement the surrounding commercial properties, support the local economy, and ensure the continued vitality of the space, in line with the evolving nature of the neighborhood, and will ensure the property's continued contribution to the The CG, General Commercial District is intended to accommodate areas of commercial development predominantly located along corridors and at key nodes. This property is consistent with the concept and description for the General Commercial District and is consistent with the objective of the zoning code. If rezoned to CG, this property would be afforded the complete list of permitted and conditional uses listed in Ordinance 6513. The future land use plan map would need to be amended to accommodate this rezon request. The future land use classification of residential medium high is not consistent with the requested CG zoning, and a future land use plan map amendment to Community Commercial Center is recommended to support the request. It would be consistent with other adjacent CG zoned properties to the south, southeast, and southwest along Airport Road. The zoning map amendment finding is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. The recommendation to Planning Commission is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property CG, General Commercial District, because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. And further, to amend the future land use plan map to designate the property Community Commercial Center. We have received a letter from a representative of a property owner adjacent to the request, and I will read the letter, which is brief. Charmery Square POA is located at 301 Hammond Drive, which runs along one side and directly behind 413 Hammond Drive. The POA includes four buildings, which contain six condos each, for a total of 24 homes in its community. The POA is currently zoned residential. This community is known for being a quiet community and has many amenities and potential to hold its value. I believe allowing the property at 413 Hammond Drive to be zoned as commercial poses a threat to that as a homeowner. It also will bring in unwanted traffic to the nearby school and to our private entrances to our community. I would like for you to consider the location of our homes in the zoning of this property and assigned by Jeannie Black. And that concludes the presentation. And each of you has a copy of that letter at your place. It does include some photographs, and want to make sure that because Ms. Black was unable to attend this evening, that her comments and the pictures are called to your attention. And that concludes the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Director Selman. So, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the application. So, may I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved. Second.
All right. Thank you. Director Selman, is there a staff report?
There is, and I have prematurely delivered it to you. I don't know if we have anyone signed up to speak.
No.
We do not.
Okay. In that case, could the applicant please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Yes, sorry.
And...
Yes.
Yeah, let us know if there's anything to add. You've got five minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Lindsay Landrum. I propose this. We are, well, we purchased the chapel at 413 Hammond Drive, and since the last meeting, I've been able to meet quite a few of the residents, and apart from Ms. Black, everyone is really excited for us to be there, most of them offering to assist us in renovations and power washing, and so we're really excited to be in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I please get your address for the record as well?
My personal address?
Yes.
Is 466 Whitfield Road. It's in Piercey, Arkansas.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, now, Directors, do you have any questions about this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask the question. I guess this fence is what's behind the church, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
The fence is looking from the church property...
Yeah, right there.
To the, yeah, to the other side, yeah. Ms. Landrum?
Yes, sir.
What is the capacity of the building, or at least the chapel portion of that?
Well, so, I have 36 parking spots up front. Now, it has pews inside, so I guess just depending on the size of the person, we expect we won't be able to hold any more than 80 people.
Okay. That would be the whole facility for a given function?
Yes, sir.
Which probably would be consistent with what we would have seen at church?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what are the expected hours of operation of the chapel?
Well, so, ideally, we're by appointment only, of course, for elopements and weddings. We only plan on doing weddings after 10 o'clock in the morning, and then in a, I guess, ordinance with the city code, we would end by 10 o'clock for the noise ordinance. Hopefully, we like to sleep as well, so hopefully we'll be done earlier than 10:00 PM. Yes, sir.
I don't see any problem with the neighborhood with the sound.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens, okay, if your capacity is only going to be 80?
Yes, ma'am.
What if there are more than 36 cars? I mean, if everybody came...
That's a great question. Yes, ma'am.
Parking.
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question. We might, like, once we actually get in the space and we're able to kind of look at the numbers again, I mean, if we're only able to hold, we figured, you know, two people per car at least. Some people, you know, might have more if they have children. So, once we get in the space, we might have to work those numbers a little bit if there's not enough parking.
But the parking wouldn't affect the neighbors anyway?
No, ma'am.
Would it? I mean, even if you had to go across the street?
Yes, ma'am. No. So, in order to get to Charmery Square, which is behind us, they would actually have to go down the road and then turn in. Yes, ma'am. And I guess worst case, if there were a couple additional cars, they would, it would be on the weekends, so they would park over at the community space, the National Park College space. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Stoudt, could you please call roll on the motion to approve? Gerke?
Approved.
Scott?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Raimick?
Approved.
And Stafford?
Approved.
Okay. The motion passes, and this item, as you requested, will be heard by the Board of Directors. They will make the final decision on July 15th in this room, 6:00.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Selman, could you please introduce the next item?
Yes, thank you. The next item is a request for plan development, 23, 25-055. It's approximately 514 Gaines Avenue. This is a PD development plan, an application to allow for smaller lot sizing and reduce building setbacks in the RN5 Zone District for affordable housing.
All right. Very good. So, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application, so may I have a motion and second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Director Selman, could you please present the staff report on the item?
Yes, thank you. This is exciting because this is going to be our first PD under the new zoning code. So, Habitat has been very patient with us in trying to figure out how best to present this. The applicant is Garland County Habitat for Humanity, represented by Executive Director Cindy Wagstaff, and Habitat is requesting a PD development plan approval to construct two homes on a single double frontage, 46 by 182 lot, in Gaines addition, block 10, lot 4, in support of forward hot springs and the hot spring housing strategies goals to provide affordable housing. If approved, a separate land division is required, and that is item three on our agenda tonight. Lot 4 is in District 2. The Ordinance 6513 establishes the purpose, initiation, authorization, exceptions from district regulations, procedure, and effect of approval for plan development. And a plan development is allowed in all districts per Ordinance 6513. Gaines PD, block 10, lot 4, would allow Garland County Habitat for Humanity to divide an 800, 8,442 square feet, lot 4, into two new affordable lots for infill, single-family homes, and existing District 2 neighborhood. Now, the minimum RN5 lot size, and this, this land is zoned RN5 and will continue to be zoned RN5, for a single-family attached home, so that's two families, one house, is 4,250 square feet per dwelling. However, to create two detached dwellings rather than attached, 6,500 square feet per house is required. So, the applicant is seeking approval to build two three-bedroom, single-family detached rather than attached homes on lot 4. The size of the lot at 8,442 square feet is 99.93% of the required minimum lot area for one two-family house. Habitat's successful homeownership model facilitates affordable, single-family home ownership on individual lots. While lot... While lot 4's size is 99.93% sufficient to support one attached two-family home, it falls shorter when it comes to being divided into individual lots for single-family ownership. In addition, there is a 15-foot sewer easement on the south perimeter of lot 4, which will force the building envelopes 3.5 feet into the required setback on the north side of the lots. Per ordinance 6513, plan developments, PD, are intended to encourage and allow more creative and flexible development of land than is possible under district zoning regulations and to provide enhanced design and amenities to the city. The underlying zone district dimensional design and use regulations apply to a PD, and in this case, that'll be RN5, unless specifically modified through approval. The RN5 setbacks are, in the front, 15, on the side, 7 and 1/2, and on the back, 15 feet. The applicant is requesting a setback exception only on the north side. We still have the front 15-foot setback. On the north side, we'd have a 4-foot setback rather than 7 and 1/2. But on the south side of the lot, there would be, including the sewer easement, a sideyard of 17 and 1/2 feet. And again, the backyard would meet the requirements of the RN5. So the only, the only setback deviation would be on that north side. Section 144D, exceptions from district regulations, Garland County Habitat for Humanity requests that the board grant the following exceptions to the district dimensional regulations for the plan development of two attainable houses. A, to reduce that sideyard setback on the north side to 4 feet. And B, grant a minimum lot size exception for the RN5 Zone District to allow a land division into two 4,221-square-foot lots, which while smaller than the minimum size for the zone, are otherwise generally consistent with other developed lots in the vicinity. Garland County Habitat for Humanity understands that to be granted such exception, the applicant must demonstrate such enhanced design and amenities. Characteristics and amenities to be considered in this determination include workforce, affordable housing set-asides, and this does meet a requirement of ordinance 6513, section 144D, 3F, and the increased sideyard from 7 and 1/2 feet to 17 and 1/2 feet, thereby creating a more usable side yard along the lot's south side. Habitat believes that this standard for workforce, affordable housing set-aside is met by their 25-year 0% mortgage for the total cost of the home and by a 10-year silent second mortgage on the equity for the total appraised value of the property. The first mortgage also includes provisions to ensure that the home is the buyer's primary residence for the duration of the first mortgage. By providing new attainable homes, Habitat is helping to implement both the Hot Springs Housing Strategy and Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan. The recommendation of Planning Commission and the final decision of the Board of Directors must make a finding that the following standards for PD plan development have generally been met. Garland County Habitat for Humanity's application for Gaines Plan Development, block 10, lot 4, meets the approval standards as follows. One, the proposed plan development will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. The impact of two single-family homes is nearly indistinguishable from the impact of one two-family home in terms of infrastructure, parking, and activity levels, and should not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the vicinity. While one side setback is reduced by 3 and 1/2 feet, the opposite side is increased by 10 feet. The proposed plan development will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. RPID 37244, the subject property, if developed as two lots, each with one single-family home, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property differently than if developed with one two-family home. In fact, on block 10, RPIDs 37248 and 37247 are situated identically to the proposed PD. Again, the zoning remains RN5 but becomes subject to the approved PD site arrangement of one lot that becomes two lots, each with its own street frontage. Adequate utilities and infrastructure are present in the neighborhood, along with drainage, off-street parking and loading, pedestrian access, and all other necessary facilities. The proposed PD would create two back-to-back residential lots where one lot now exists. Each lot would be developed to provide adequate vehicular ingress and egress designed to minimize traffic congestion upon public streets. And the subject lot fronts both Gaines and Mayflower Streets. The proposed residential lots would arrange structures, parking areas, walks, landscape lighting, and other site design elements to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood because the subject is a double-frontage lot. Habitat for Humanity is the sole owner of the subject land as required by section 144B. The PD development plan proposes flexibility in the development of land, encourages a creative approach to the use of land that results in better development, that being additional housing, allows better utilization of land, provides efficient use for more efficient arrangement of structures, and facilitates the implementation of adopted city and land use policies, particularly with respect for areas with potential re, for, potential redevelopment as described in 144A, purpose. The application demonstrates that the ordinance 6513, section 144, plan development, purpose, authorization, exemptions, exceptions from district regulations, initiation procedures, and effect of approval have been or can be met subject to conditions. The recommendation is to accept the findings and recommendation of the staff report to recommend that the Board of Directors amend the zoning map for Gaines addition, block 10, lot 4, to add plan development, PD, to the existing RN5 Residential Neighborhood 5 Zone District in accordance with the procedures and standards of section 14.4, subject to the approved development plan with following conditions. Number one, after development plan approval, the development plan will constitute the regulations applicable to the subject property. The plan development must be developed in accordance with the development plan rather than the RN5 Zone District regulations otherwise applicable to the property. Violation of any condition is a violation of this code and constitutes grounds for revocation of all approvals granted for the plan development. Number two, per section 144C3, a subsequent Planning Commission-approved Hot Springs' code-compliant land division of Gaines addition, block 10, lot 4, consistent with PD development plan approval, is required in order that the subject land may be divided from one lot into two equally-sized lots, one fronting Gaines Street and one fronting Mayflower Street. Number three, PD development plan must reflect the following. A, the size of the buildings will consider the required minimum 10-foot separation between the building and the center line of the sewer main. A minimum 7.5 feet separation from the side property line for the sewer easement and the minimum building setbacks from property lines. B, the driveway must not exceed 24 feet width through the right-of-way. C, the driveway must have a 5-foot radius to each side. The radius must intersect the back of curb. D, sideyard setbacks, as appearing in the PD development plan. E, parking area dimensions must be drawn to scale, and parking lot drive aprons will be required. Number four, the final plat shall not be executed or recorded prior to Board of Directors' approval. Five, building permits shall not be issued prior to Board of Directors' approval and final plat recording. Number six, the driveway must be 6 inches thick, 3,000 PSI concrete and steel reinforced from the road edge through the right-of-way to the private property line. Number seven, the curb is to be restored at existing curb cut drive locations during construction of the new driveway. And number eight, a driveway inspection will be required prior to pouring concrete. And contact information for the engineering department is provided in order to schedule an inspection. And that completes the staff report.
Phew. Yeah. Take a drink of water and...
It's too late.
Thank you, Director Selman. So, could the applicant please come forward? Give your name and address for the record, and let us know if you have any additional comments or anything you'd like to add. You've got five minutes.
I'm Cindy Wagstaff, the Executive Director at Garland County Habitat for Humanity, and we're at 240 Hobson Avenue. What else was I supposed to say?
Anything else that you would like to add that you feel like clarify the submission? Or if nothing...
I think we used, I think we used a lot of words already. Was there anything, is there any questions about, about the project?
I have none. I, I don't have any.
No questions.
I really don't know what else I could add to that.
Okay. Very good. Is there anyone else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. No one else has signed up? So, public discussion on the item is now closed. We've said we don't have any questions here. So, Mr. Stoudt, could you please call Rohl on the motion to approve? Scott?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Ramick?
Approved.
Gurke?
Approved.
Stafford?
Approved.
And the motion passes with a recommendation to the Board of Directors for approval, and this item will be on the agenda for July 1st at 6:00 in this room.
All right. So we have one more item on the new business. Director Selman, could you please introduce the new item?
Yes, thank you. This is final subdivision 25056, approximately 514 Gaines Avenue. This is a minor subdivision application to replat lot 4, block 10 of the Gaines addition to Hot Springs subdivision, excuse me, into two separate lots.
Okay. So a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
Selma.
Second.
Very good. So, Director Selman, could you please present the staff report on that item?
Yes, thank you. This is the request to divide the lot 4, block 10 of Gaines addition, that was the subject of the PD development plan application. It is at 514 Gaines Avenue, zoned RN5, has a future land use designation of residential medium high, and it's located in Board of Directors District Number 2. The finding on this, and this is a subdivision, although an unusual one because it is subject to the PD site plan being approved, the finding is that this application meets the submission requirements for replat land division consideration. A plan development approval application, PD 25055, has also been submitted for this property, seeking to allow lot 4, block 10 of Gaines addition to Hot Springs subdivision to be divided into two separate 4,221-square-foot lots for single-family affordable housing infill development. Requested plan development approval application exceptions from district regulations include lot area reductions to 4,221 square feet and sideyard building setbacks of 4 feet along the north side of the property. Plan development approval application is required to receive Board of Directors' approval per ordinance number 6513, Article 144E2C. Board of Directors' approval is required prior to execution and recording of a final plat establishing the requested reduced lot sizing and northern sideyard building setbacks. The recommendation is that Planning Commission approve the application, final subdivision 25056, to replat lot 4, block 10, and Gaines addition to Hot Springs subdivision into two separate lots, consistent with the Gaines block 10, lot 4, plan development application, PD 25055, with the following conditions. Number one, plan development approval application for Gaines block 10, lot 4, plan development, PD 25055, must be approved by the City of Hot Springs Board of Directors. Number two, Board of Directors' approval is required prior to execution and recording of a final plat establishing the requested reduced lot sizing and building setbacks. Number three, the plat must be filed with the Garland County Circuit Clerk's Office, and a recorded copy shall be returned to the Planning Department within 30 days of the Planning Director's execution thereof, or this approval will become null and void, and that completes the staff report.
All right. Very good. So, one more time, could we get the applicant to please come forward? Give your name and address for the record? And let us know if you have anything else.
Okay. Sorry. I'm Cindy Wagstaff with Garland County Habitat for Humanity at 240 Hobson Avenue. Any questions?
All right. Let's just, let's just go there. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Sounds good. No questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. I do want to say this is, it has been kind of exciting to be involved in this. I know that the prior agenda item is sort of, well, it's very connected with this. And it's been exciting to be part of kind of a new, a new thing, so we really enjoy it. And the Planning Department has been extremely good because I, I would not have known what I was doing. I'm still not sure, but they are.
Well, good luck to you then.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
We know how to build a house. We're just not real sure about this stuff.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, public discussion of the item is now closed. Any questions among ourselves, commissioners? No? Okay. Mr. Stoudt, please call the Rohl on the motion to approve. Walker?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Ramick?
Approved.
Gurke?
Approved.
Scott?
Approved.
Stafford?
Approved.
Okay. That item has, has passed, and it will not be heard by the board, but its implementation is contingent on board approval of the PD on July 1st.
Okay.
Is that, are there questions or...
Yes.
So, do we need to wait until the board meeting before we finalize the, the lot split?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So the next item on our agenda is the director's report.
Yes, and we do have some things to report. We met with the graphic designer, whose professional services are being paid under the Landscape Handbook grant, and the handbook will... services are being paid under the Landscape Handbook Grant, and the handbook will be complete within a few months, so it should be available for use right about the time when the landscape regulations of Title 16 become effective. So we're excited about that. The handbook is going to have a more consistent appearance, and we hope will be organized well, and that will be something that people who are doing development and people who are not doing development will both be able to use as kind of a do-it-yourself thing, or used by professionals doing larger developments.
Just, just a quick question on that one. Are they gonna, I mean, use pretty much what we're going to approve before they start doing their, I always have this thing about consistency, just to make sure they're working off the same thing.
Yeah, we have really a real chicken and egg kind of thing going on here. The Landscape Ordinance final draft is going to go to the Urban Forestry Committee in July, and with their nod of approval, then Planning Commission will hear that ordinance at the regularly-scheduled August meeting, and those, those two things should come together very, very well. And this is, this is, you know, this is different for government, to make sure that two things that are related actually do relate well to one another. But we're pretty sure we're on track to make that happen.
Good deal.
It's pretty cool. And the other thing is that Planning Commission, we are going to begin study and recommendations for sign ordinance updates this month. We'll need to schedule some work sessions, and I have three potential dates and times for you. Thursday, June 26th, at 5 o'clock, that'd be two, two weeks from tonight. Does that look like something that all of you or one of you even can make?
That's on the...
Thursday the 26th, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that gonna, is that gonna eat into our Bridge Street Live viewing?
No, we'll get you out in an hour.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there won't, there won't be any conflict there.
All right.
These work sessions will be an hour long. This is, is some fairly dense material that we'll be going through, and I don't want to make you crazy. I just want to make sure that everybody understands what's in there and that we're heading in a good direction. The second date that we had in mind is Thursday, July 3rd, and that is your agenda meeting from noon to 1:00. And I'm worried about those of you who would be taking off that week. Is there anyone who's not available?
I'm not available. We're going to have...
Okay. That's maybe not a good time.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Don't come that day. Thursday, July 3rd is, is gone. All right. And Thursday, July 10th, which would be the week after that, at 5 o'clock, from 5 to 6:00. And then we'll have our regular meeting at 6:00 that day.
That works.
That one works.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. And we'll kind of take the temperature of this project at that time and figure out what else we may need or not need in terms of getting things put together. Now, did everybody get the housing strategy and the sign code draft? We can resend it.
I've got it.
If that, everybody has it? Janice, you don't have it?
I don't think so, but I may. It could be some...
Okay. Dawn, could resend Janice one?
I'm sure you sent it. I may have deleted it. I didn't mean to. I'm being honest. I mean, I don't think I did. I usually, I keep all yells, because I was trying to delete messages and I found out last year.
Well, we probably, probably overwhelmed your storage, so. Reverend Scott, do you, did you receive it?
I do have it.
Okay, okay. So everybody here has it, and this is everybody except for Ashley, and who else is not here?
Wally.
Wally, okay. Could you resend it to both Ashley and Wally, just in case? Good, thanks. Okay.
Is Bill Vow... Is Bill Vow still on?
Oh, yeah, Bill Vow is, is not here tonight, obviously. But yes, he's still on. Yep. And if he's following his usual pattern, he has read both of them and has notes, so. All right. That is all I have.
Well, I'd just like to quickly say, it was a pleasure yesterday for three of us to be at a amazing graduation ceremony, and we are now proud to be, LaDonte and Bill and I, certified Arkansas planning officials.
Wow.
Okay.
Congratulations. That is good.
Did you give them the plaque?
Absolutely. Signed by the Governor. Yeah, absolutely.
It's gonna be worse, huh?
Maybe. Okay.
You never know.
May I have a, a motion to adjourn?